I'd like to call the August, uh, Pecoson City School Board meeting to order. First up is pledge to the flag. Do please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
Do we have any additions or modifications to the agenda?
Yes, we do. Under, um, other matters for consideration, which is Agenda Item 7, we are pulling Item B from your agenda this evening because you will be approving that action as part of the personnel packet that you've been provided.
Thank you, ma'am. And next up, recognitions. Dr. Parrish?
Yes. As Dr. Carter moves over to the podium, I would ask that our principals, Mrs. Grisco, Dr. Wood, Mrs. Bunting, and Dr. Sayak come forward, please.
The Pecoson City Public Schools was selected to receive the 2019 Virginia Index of Performance Board of Education Distinguished Achievement Award based upon data from the school years 2016 to 2017, and then to 2017, 2018. This was awarded from the Virginia Department of Education and recognized by Dr. James F. Lane Superintendent of Public Instruction. Our school division received this distinguished award for meeting federal pass rate targets and graduation targets, and for making progress toward educational goals established by the Board of Education and the governor. In addition, the division must earn 75 VIP points, including bonus points, in each content area. We are recognizing the work done in all four of our schools that led to our division's recognition. Please join me in congratulating our principals and their faculty and staff for all the work that they did for this achievement.
Next, I would ask that Mrs. Jennifer Mosteller come forward.
This is a bittersweet moment for us as we say our official goodbye to Jennifer. She served on the school board for three years. During that time, she supported the division in numerous ways. She was an advocate for students and their families. She was active in the community as both a parent and a board member. She was involved in important school board decisions to include the school consolidation decision, which ultimately led to the PMS Modernization Project, in which we're engaged in now. She also served on the Horetta Board for WHRO as a representative of our school board. Jennifer, thank you for all that you've done for our students and school division as a whole during the past three years. We wish you and your family all the best in the coming years. Please join me in thanking Mrs. Mosteller for her work and support over the past three years.
And at this time, I would invite, uh, Delegate Helsel up to the podium, as he is a special recognition this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Parrish. I appreciate it, members of the board, Mr. Chairman. Uh, if I could be joined here, uh, by Becky Morrison. I don't know which one of these things I'm supposed to use. Is this the right one, Jennifer?
Yes, it is. Thanks.
We're here tonight to pay tribute to one of Pecoson's brightest stars, Becky Morrison. Among many of her activities, Becky has made time in her busy life to not only thank veterans for their service, but also to go the extra mile, which causes our veterans to have something to look forward to, but also to make sure that they know how important their service was to our country. Veterans, some who are with us tonight, are deserving of our respect, are deserving of our appreciation, and are deserving of a hearty well-done. And Becky, along with her students, makes sure that that happens. Becky, this is probably the last official duty as delegate of 91st District, and I'm so proud that I, it ends this way. I'm proud and honored to be part of a community that produces educators like you. You are the shining light on the hill. You are the educator who goes beyond the call of an 11th grade history teacher to make sure that students are aware of the sacrifices made by our veterans who came before us. And through their sacrifice, we are here gathered tonight. Becky, through your many, through your many, uh, many activities, your dedication to your students, your deep love for the Pecoson school system, you have brought great credit, not only upon yourself, but also to the city of Pecoson, the Commonwealth of Virginia, indeed, the United States of America. Becky, you are indeed that precious stone in the crown that we call Pecoson. I'd like to read the resolution. Commonwealth of Virginia, General Assembly, its House Resolution Number 267, commending Becky Morrison. And this was agreed to by the House of Delegates, February the 18th of 2019. Whereas Becky Morrison, a passionate, advanced placement United States history teacher at Pecoson High School, created the Pecoson Veterans Project to engage both students and area veterans. Whereas Becky Morrison's Pecoson Veterans Project is an interactive, out-of-the-box, living history unit on World War II, inspired by her at the Friends of the National World War II Memorial Teacher Conference. For the project, students adopt a local veteran of World War II, the Korean War, or the Vietnam War, whom they interview on video and develop biographies from their stories. Whereas in Becky Morrison's Pecoson Veterans Project, students build lasting relationships with local veterans while learning about military service, geography, culture, and the role of the United States in various historical events. The project is in its second year and includes over 50 veterans. Whereas with a bachelor's degree in history from Hampton University and a master's degree in, uh, in history education from Regent University, Becky Morrison is currently in her 26th year of teaching. She has won the 2019 Teacher of the Year Award from the Veterans of Foreign Wars Post 3160, the Friends of the World War II Memorial Model Community Service Project Award, and multiple grants from the Pecoson Education Foundation. Whereas work done by Becky Morrison's students in the Pecoson Veterans Project will be achieved for others to access and learn from at the Friends of the National World War II Memorial, as well as the Pecoson Museum. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the House of Delegates that Becky Morrison, a passionate, advanced placement United States history teacher at Pecoson High School, will hereby be commended for creating the Pecoson Veterans Project to engage both students and area veterans. And be it further resolved that the clerk of the House of Delegates prepare a copy of this resolution for presentation to Becky Morrison for her enterprising and engaging projects that utilize local resources and tell the stories of the residents of Pecoson. So Becky, it's, uh, it's, it's an honor for me to present this resolution.
Thank you.
For you, and this flag was flown over the Capitol in your honor. So, want you to have that too, and thank you so much for all that you do for our veterans.
Thank you so much.
And I want to thank Delegate Helsel, um, who was in the inaugural first year of our project. Um, if you don't have his book, When God Showed Up, you need to get it. Um, it is fantastic. And so, he is very modest, but he was, um, in the first year helping our students. I want to recognize Dr. Tate, and Dr. and Mr. Rayonello, and Mr. Norm Hahn, who are also in our veterans project that are here tonight. And if you know a veteran who wants to be adopted this year, I am currently, um, looking for new veterans to be adopted. Jeremy's granddad, um, was in our first year and had the time of his life, I think. Um, so, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Can you, um, pose for us for a picture before you start off? Thank you.
And, and this is all because Dr. Parrish sent-
Thank you, Delegate Helsel, and thank you, Ms. Morrison, and thank you, veterans, for your service. Uh, with that, we're going to move into presentations and reports, and I see a few people got the hint. And first up will be, uh, Ms. Woodruff with the financial update.
Good evening, Chairman Carter, members of the school board, and Dr. Parrish. For the finance report this evening, I wanted to let you know that the finance staff have been working hard over the last two months to close out fiscal year 2019 and prepare for the auditors. The auditors have completed preliminary work and field work at the school activities for the non-funds. They will return to the school board office mid-September to begin the final year of work. Last week, we met with new teachers at orientation, and benefits enrollment is now open for them to make their benefit selections. Today, we assisted the schools with fee collection during open house at the middle and elementary schools, and will continue again tomorrow at the high school and primary school. We encourage parents to pay their fees during open house, but if they would prefer, they can pay online, and there's a link to online school payments on our website. I'm also working on the state-required annual school financial report for fiscal year 2019. That is due-
Ma'am, any questions? Thank you very much, Ms. Woodruff. And next up, uh, operations update with Mr. Pappas and a PMS Modernization Project update as well.
Evening, Chairman Carter, School Board, Dr. Parrish. In the area of safety, as part of last summer's Safety Committee recommendation, two new vestibule walls have been completed at both the high school and the primary school. This now means that all four schools have the same scenario whereby someone visiting our school is both greeted and shows their ID before they can simply walk into the school, um, and, and that's a significant safety enhancement. In the area of food service, Aramark will once again be offering breakfast in the classroom at both PES and PPS. Aramark staff is currently participating in the open house to assist families navigating the free and reduced lunch application process and breakfast, uh, application, as well as how to start debit card accounts. In the area of transportation, we just completed the first of two required in services. We worked collaboratively with school-based administrators and student services staff to start the process of developing a unified approach to supporting positive student behavior in buses as they do within schools. Drivers were very engaged in the process, and their input will not only help enhance safe driving by reducing, uh, distractions on the bus, but will also reinforce the concepts in the schools of respect, responsibility, safety, kindness, and courtesy. Custodial staff just completed their summer cleaning, maintenance, and maintenance many summer projects. Needless to say, the schools are shiny after having been deep cleaned and ready for teachers and students to return. Relative to the PMS Modernization process, the architects are working diligently in the design development phase with the input of the PCPS Steering Committee. Additionally, the board, you will receive a much more detailed, uh, uh, date in our work session this evening.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Pappas? Thank you very much. And instructional update with Dr. Fox.
Good evening, Chairman Carter, Vice Chair Sheila, members of the board, and Dr. Parrish. This evening, I'll be sharing with you some of our SOL data, some timelines for the release of additional data this fall, and some other instructional information with you. So, as we share every year, we are very excited and happy to announce that based on the preliminary data, all schools in the division have met the state's accountability and accreditation standards. In terms of information that you're going to receive over the next couple of months, later this month, in the next couple of days, we'll get additional information on our SOL test pass rates in different content areas. In late September, you're going to get information from the SAT and AP tests that were taken this, um, spring by our students. We'll also get the additional official accreditation ratings from VDOE, um, which include our school quality index report updates. And we'll also get graduation and dropout rate information for you. As a division, you can see that we have exceeded all of the state averages in the areas of reading, writing, math, science, and history. And again, this year, we also exceeded last year's pass rates in all of those areas. What you're seeing here is a combined average for all of the tests given. For example, if you look at reading, that reflects the, um, reading tests that were given in grades three through eight and 11th. And again, they show our pass rates this year, how they compared to last year, and then on the far right-hand column, you can see the state pass rates for those. Here are just a few highlights. We had so many, it was hard to pick, but we've had to narrow this down for you. So of the 30 tests given, 22 saw pass rates increase from last year, with the largest gain being 22 percentage points. Of the 30 tests given, 22 also saw pass advance rates higher than 14%, with the highest pass advance rate being 48%. And 23 have pass rates of 90% or higher, with the highest in some categories being 100% pass rates. As a division, our math pass rates increased by six percentage points across the board, with some of the highest gains being seen in grade five math, which increased by seven percentage points, grade eight math by 22 percentage points, and our high school geometry increased by 17 percentage points. Other notable, notable pass rates at the elementary school, grade five reading, had a 93% pass rate. Grade eight civics and economics was at 96%, and our chemistry at the high school was at 98%. While these high pass rates in many areas are great, we also look at various student groups to see how they're doing within a specific content area. So we're pleased to share with you that there were also some significant gains last year for our students with disabilities and our students who are economically disadvantaged. As you can see, we had significant gains in grade five math of a 44% increase in the pass rates for students with disabilities, 39% increase for students in grade eight reading, and a 17% for students in world history, too. For our economically disadvantaged students, we had 29% growth in grade three math, 16% in grade eight math, and 27% increase in geometry at the high school. So while we celebrate all of these successes and we thank all of our administrators, teachers, and staff for all of their hard work, we still know that there are students who need us to dig deeper and work harder, and we'll continue to do that for them. Looking ahead, just so that you know where we are with some of our standards, um, this will be the first, or this is the first year that the revised English standards from 2017 will be assessed. So our teachers have worked with crosswalk documents to make sure they're ready for that this coming spring. Our science standards were approved last year, and this is the crosswalk, uh, year for those, where we'll start testing for the first time, and those will be during the 2021 school year. And we will continue at the state level with computer-adapted testing for, um, grades three through eight in reading and math. And finally, tonight, I just wanted to remind everybody that our open house events are taking place this week. We had the middle school and the elementary school today, and we have the primary school and the high school coming. And our back-to-school night schedules and other events are all posted on our webpage. And the first day of school is next Tuesday, September 3rd, and we can't wait to see everybody. So thank you. That's my report this evening.
Thank you. Any questions, comments there?
Not a question, but just a comment, Dr. Fox, to you and to the principals and all the instructors. That's just outstanding results. It was a lot of fun to, uh, get the phone call from Dr. Parrish saying, "The results are out, and they look good, and I'm looking forward to sharing with you at the board meeting." Uh, and, uh, that's just outstanding. So thank you for all your hard work and effort. I know we normally do this at the end of the meeting, but it is worth, uh, in my opinion, uh, to stop right now and say congratulations, especially last year, I know, as a board, the, Dr. Parrish specifically mentioned disabilities and economically challenged as a way that we wanted to improve. And not just to see a little improvement, but those are double-digit improvements across the board. Uh, it is a, commend, you, commend you tremendously for all the principals for getting together, working with teachers, uh, and finding a way to, uh, uh, just get our kids engaged, and that's, uh, truly impressive, and, uh, just speaks to the community and to the dedication of our teachers and staff. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Troutman. I think that was, uh, very appropriate and, and timely, and I would like to echo the same sentiments. Numbers are mind-boggling, uh, so congratulations, and, uh, give our best to your teachers, and please let them know how grateful we are and thank-
And, Dr. Carter, I believe that we've done a great job school-wide, uh, with the focus on STEM, um, at all grade levels right now. I, I would have to think that those numbers play some sort of a role. I'd be interested to know if we had any feedback from our teachers, staff, or principals in regards to that.
With respect to STEM by itself?
Yeah.
I think just overall, you'll see that what they are appreciating is the focus on how we can integrate those concepts, not just in the science and math classes, but across content areas. And I think, um, they'll, they've been given a lot of resources. We've been very fortunate from the DODIA grants, that we can provide them with resources and manipulatives that engage students and put more hands-on types of activities in the hands of students. And I think that in and of itself just helps engage everybody at a higher level.
Thank you very much, Dr. Fox. Uh, do we have any public comment?
No, sir.
Sheila, would you like to run us through the consent agenda, please?
Yes. Uh, consent agenda includes the approval of financial reports, the approval of personnel action, the authorization to change appropriation and to accept and expend funds in accordance with the attached request, the approval of minutes of the June regular meeting and work session, approval of minutes for closed sessions held on June 17th and 18th, and approval of minutes of the July special organizational meeting.
Thank you, ma'am. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Reimers, could you call for a vote, please?
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. Holcomb?
Aye.
Ms. Hessel?
Aye.
Mr. Troutman?
Aye.
Mr. Freeman?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sheila?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion passes 72.
Thank you. And other matters for consideration, item A, consideration of approval of second reading of changes to policy manual. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, we brought these, um, changes to you, um, in a previous meeting, and these are the changes that we're making based on the, uh, actions of the General Assembly last winter and into the spring, and have been presented to us by our school board committee. So at this point, I recommend approval of the changes to policy as presented this evening.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
To move.
And a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments there? Ms. Reimers?
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Mr. Holcomb?
Aye.
Ms. Hessel?
Aye.
Mr. Troutman?
Aye.
Mr. Freeman?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sheila?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye. And for our communications and other matters, Dr. Parrish, would you like to kick us off?
Yes, just officially welcoming everybody back as we are about to kick off this new school year, just a week, a day. Um, we had successful open houses today at the middle school, as well as the elementary school, and then tomorrow, we will see our students and families at the high school and the primary school, so we look forward to seeing them there as well. Um, if you're watching this and you have not enrolled your student, please make sure that you do that this week. For us, it's much easier if that happens this week than, um, on the first day of school. Um, I also wanted to, um, remind everybody that as we start school next week, um, buses will likely slow traffic down a little bit as they will be back on the roads. We know that we'll run late with buses for the first couple of weeks with school, for, um, at school, and I know principals are communicating that out, so not to worry. We just have to get everybody settled back into the new routine. And to echo, uh, much what was said up here during Dr. Fox's or following her presentation, and I was able to say it convocation, but I'd like to say it again tonight, is I'm not sure I've ever been prouder of the work done by our schools in the last year, and the results certainly showed with those SOL, um, test results, and we'll be sharing some more with you in the work session, but we just have incredible teachers, um, staff, and educational leaders, and just excited to get this year started because we know we're going to continue that kind of work into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Jordan?
Um, first off, best of luck to all the teachers, uh, principals, bus drivers, um, staff, students, um, and those parents letting go of their kindergarteners for the first time. I remember that day well, a couple of years ago, and that's not an easy thing, watching your son or daughter get on the bus for the first time. So, um, uh, it was great to see Ms. Mosteller here. It was a pleasure working alongside her over the past couple of years. She's, she was a great advocate for our board, and, um, it was a pleasure working with her. And then, um, it was great to see Delegate Helsel here, recognizing all the work that Mrs. Morrison, um, not only does, but continues to do, um, for the veterans project. Having a 90-plus-year-old grandfather, uh, who served, uh, in the military, it's often an area of focus that gets forgotten, and one of the things that she's done an exceptional job of is bringing, bringing all of those folks who have served to the forefront. Um, and it's a tremendous, um, I know I would have thoroughly enjoyed being in high school, uh, speaking with those veterans. Um, so, uh, but she does an exceptional job, um, as do so many of our other teachers, but it's, it's been a great project and great publicity and PR for the school. By no means did she do it just for the publicity. Um, she did it because she truly cares about, um, the veterans and, and the students as well. So, um, it's a great project.
Holcomb?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, a couple of comments about the band. Uh, I have a sophomore in band this year. Went to their, uh, event last week, and what really caught my attention was the excitement of these 15, 14, 15, 16-year-olds who have been there every day, three to nine, during some pretty hot weather, doing some work out there in the field. Unfortunately, it rained the night of their event, so we couldn't see them out in the field, but, and my, my, uh, son was actually visibly disappointed. He couldn't show us what they, what they've accomplished. So, that's, that's amazing to me. It's, that's, it's hot out there. It's been hot. So, uh, Mr. Sproul, great work. Thank you for your, uh, every year continual, good work on that with the band. It's going to be a great year, and I think that, uh, he said, "This is the best group they've had in a while." He said it every year. I don't know if he says it every year now, but, but, uh, it's going to be great. I'm looking forward to that. And while I was there, Mr. Pappas, um, I glanced around. He's been spying around the high school when I was there, at the condition. Just looks great again. I said it's every year, but really good work this summer. I don't know how many hours, man-hours that represents, but it's going to be more than a few, and so, thanks for that work, and you've done, uh, enough work to keep the old buildings looking good, looking new. So thank you so much for your work. I know the students will, uh, as they come in, so thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Helsel?
No, I couldn't agree more with what these two gentlemen have said. I'm just going to echo, um, I think it's great for all of our athletes. It's been very hot out there lately, so it's good to hear we haven't had anything happening because we're hearing more in the, in the news about things that are happening. Um, so I just wish all the schools good luck this year, and good luck to all of them.
Troutman?
Echo what everybody just said, and I went on a long rant a few minutes ago, but, uh, I'll, I'll stop in these short words, and I would just ask anybody who's watching television, and for those in the room, uh, share the story, uh, because it's a great story to tell, and we have a lot to be proud of, and I think, you know, showing how great our school system is, it is the, the engine of town, and, and I think we need to tell that story as much as we possibly can. So, uh, you know, wear it as a badge of honor, and, and talk about how great our school system is, because it's something we need to be proud of.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Freeman?
I'd just like to congratulate all the teachers, specifically, uh, their content knowledge and working with the curriculum is what drives results that the division gets credit for, so please go back and tell your teachers, "Great work, and good job." I'm looking forward to see what they come up with this year.
Good. Um, yes, I have to echo all the good thoughts that everybody made. Um, Mr. Troutman, excellent job of summing up just the incredible gra, uh, gratitude that we have for the teachers and the, you know, the special leaders that have made our success as possible. It's, uh, it's amazing. Um, I'm also looking forward to, um, the, to the middle school, uh, modernization. Uh, one of the, one of the architects that came to talk to us about it said that a, a school is four walls with tomorrow inside, so it's just very exciting. I, uh, on a personal level, my, uh, my little neighbor who came, came to our neighborhood, and she was just, I mean, just a little tiny thing, uh, is now, uh, going in for her first year at Pecoson Middle School. So she'll be in there, and then she'll be out for a little bit, and then hopefully she'll be able to see it in its new transformation, so it will be fun. That's all I've got.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, wish everybody, um, first of all, a safe and enjoyable holiday weekend, and, uh, a good first week at school, and the, I, I still can't get over the, the numbers. That is, that is a chore. I mean, that is, that is a monumental task, and to pull it off like that is, uh, I don't know, it's impressive. I don't know any other word to use but impressive, so, uh, nice work to everybody involved with, uh, keeping our schools going on a, on a, on a- So nice work to everybody involved with keeping our schools going on a day-to-day basis. Everybody in the school board office, and in individual schools, and bus drivers. Everybody comes together and works as a team, and the results are phenomenal. And thank you so much to all the veterans who allow us to do those things, or have sacrificed to allow us the freedoms to engage in such activities and just the simple act of gathering. And so hats off to them. I salute you. And any material for board review?
Not this evening.
And with that, we will adjourn to the work session.